Good morning. It's 9:30 and we will begin the public participation portion of our county council meeting on the 22nd of January. Welcome. I understand we have no one here to speak, so at this time we will adjourn the council meeting and we will see you back at 10 o'clock.
Bye.
(laughing)
Good, good morning. We will be starting the meeting at 10 o'clock, which will be about one minute and 28 seconds from now. So, just giving you a little warning. Morning. It is 10 o'clock. Welcome to the January 22nd, 2019 meeting of the Volusia County Council. Thank you all for being here. At this time, we will call the meeting to order, and we'll have the invocation today given by Pastor Carl Joseph of the Deltona Alliance Church. Going to ask, and it will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Those who like, please stand.
Good morning, Honorable Council, ladies and gentlemen. This past weekend, Deltona Alliance Church had the pleasure of acknowledging one of its members as the Volusia County Teacher of the Year. So, it's a great honor for us to be here this morning. First Corinthians, chapter 13. "If I speak human or angelic languages, but do not have love, I am a sounding gong or a clanging cymbal. If I have the gift of prophecy and understand all mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have all faith so that I can move mountains, but do not have love, I am nothing. And if I donate my goods to feed the poor, and if I give my body in order to boast, but do not have love, I gain nothing." Love is patient, love is kind, love does not envy, is not boastful, is not conceited, does not act improperly, is not selfish, is not provoked, and does not keep a record of wrongs. Dear God, we acknowledge that you have put these leaders in place for such a time as this. We thank you that you have made available to them your wisdom. We pray that they would seek your wisdom, as you will dispense wisdom in a way that will justify their decisions, Lord. We also pray that each deliberation, all the discussions, especially every decision, would come from a place of love in their hearts. We pray your protection over each one of them, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Gertman. Mr. Johnson. Dr. Lowry.
Here.
Ms. Post.
Here.
Ms. Wheeler.
Here.
Ms. Denny's.
And Mr. Kelly.
Here. And with that, we will move to the comments on the consent agenda. I have no one wishing to speak on any item. Does anyone wish to pull an item?
I do.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, I would like to have, just for comment, Z.
Z?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and Ms. Post, you wanted to pull an item?
I do. I want to pull for discussion and vote, item S, Sierra.
I'm sorry.
S, Sierra?
S. Sierra or something.
S.
Yeah, just, if you would, just use the S.
Okay. A lot of times, you don't hear the actual letter when I say it, so I'm, I say S and then the phonetic, so whatever's best for you to...
Just S works. It's always worked. You want to pull it?
Yes, please.
She wants to pull it for a vote. Okay, do I have a, Mr. Dr. Lowry?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. We accept the consent agenda, with the exception the items have been pulled.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Denny's. Make a note that item P was a last-minute proclamation that was added in the consent agenda, so that motion included that. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion stands, passes as unanimous. Can you read item S? I'll read it. This is a settlement of litigation on Michael Wade versus County Case 2017-10776 CIDL. Settlement amount is $75,000. Ms. Post?
So, item, agenda item S is a request for approval for settlement in a situation where a Votran driver struck a bicyclist in the crosswalk, and clear liability has been shown. Mr. Wade incurred $130,000 in medical bills and filed suit against the county. The county legal department then filed a counterclaim against the victim, thank you, for $18,300 for cost of incarceration from an earlier criminal conviction some years before. I took a look at the complaint, I took a look at the counterclaim, I took a look at the statute used to file the counterclaim, and I took another look at the Volusia County mission statement as well. And as a member of the council, we have a duty to ensure that every action by this council is fair and in line with putting the citizens of Volusia County first, and I'm not quite sure that this legal strategy follows that course. So, I'm not okay with this thus far. The legislative purpose of the law used in the counterclaim was not for governments to countersue injured or hurt victims. And I really can't believe that the county is using a statute actually enacted for victims' rights. Yes, Florida statute 960 is actually labeled victim assistance to go against a victim of negligence. So, this guy was released from his 366-day prison sentence over six years ago, and he served a sentence, and no action was taken to recoup monies from him for cost of his incarceration until he was injured by the county. And out of the thousands of inmates that typically run through our jail here locally each year, it's not typical for the county to file to recoup these costs. So, if county legal is interested in filing claims for reimbursement against every inmate that's released from incarceration within Volusia County, then, then that's wonderful, and I'd absolutely be open to discussing that in a future council meeting. But as for now, I'm not in agreement with the county taking action in this manner and retaliating against an injured party when the county is in fact at fault. So, what's before us today is an agreement subject to approval of county council. The actions leading up to this agreement, I feel, do not fall in line with our mission statement, which is to protect democratic values and our public trust. So, I move that we do not approve the releases provided, and then we instruct our attorney to renegotiate the settlement without the counterclaims. And that being done, there's no need to come back in front of us for council, for final approval, having today provided for an approval of the settlement in the total amount of $93,300.
Is there a second to that motion?
I will second it to further the discussion.
And your, floor is yours.
I'm interested to know, has this happened previously? Is this a standard that if there is a claim against the county, and someone has had some type of incident or, or cost to the county, that it is recouped at that time? Is it like a, a subrogation or some other documented criteria, or is this subjective?
It is common, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't, it is common for us to, to pursue a counterclaim when, when damages are claimed against the county. In this instance, the dam, while there's clear liability, the damages are, there's a question of the reasonableness of the damages, but the, the lawsuit results in a, a, an amount of money being paid, and we think that we're entitled to recover the amount of money that the statute would obligate us, that the individual is obligated by law to pay, but otherwise would be unable to do. So, we use it as a set off. If the council does not think that's appropriate, then we can refrain from doing that. If we went to trial on this case, then, then the issue, well, the liability is clear, the issue would be the reasonableness of the damages, and it would have been a costly case to try because the, the medical bills are, we would have had to contest that. So, it, it does, we think, do not think it's against public policy to, and we think it's consistent with public policy, to seek to recover an amount owed to the county when, an amount when the individual pursues a claim against us, and that we claim a set off.
And is this applied consistently?
Well, we don't file, we do it, if consistently, within the context of somebody pursues a claim against us, we take the advantage of the set offs available to the county. We do not file a suit against every individual who has been detained in the jail. We have in the past, but not in the recent past, where we know an individual has assets, pursued claims. But most claims, in most instances, the individuals are either, you'd be pursuing them in, in small claims court, many of them are returning to another state, you may not be able to get service, many don't have the money to, if you pursued it, you would be spending, throwing good money after bad, because they don't have the money to pay it.
Thank you.
To me, it seems like it's not singled out against someone because they were incarcerated. It would be filed against anyone who sues the county, files suit against the county if they previously owe money to the county. So, it's not singling out one particular, is that correct? Mr. Accra, it's not singling out someone because of incarceration?
Not singling out because of incarceration, it's because we're, we're taking the set offs that are available to, to the county.
Understand. So, it's not punishing someone, but anyone who has, they owe the county money, and there's a, they sue us, we can use that, whatever they owe us, we can sue them back for the difference of what they owe. So, Ms. Denny's.
So, we're requesting an approval of settlement. Does that mean both parties have agreed to the settlement?
Yes.
That's, so, for there to be, for this to come to us at this stage, there's already been, both parties have agreed on a settlement?
Through counsel, Mr. Wade's agreed.
And so, he was represented with legal counsel?
Yes, he was.
So, both parties had legal representation, and both parties came to an agreement of settlement for $75,000. This is not, this, this is not a unilateral contract, this is not a unilateral agreement, this is a two-party agreement?
This is negotiated settlement of a case that otherwise would be set for trial.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's still on the trial docket, but it would otherwise have been, set for trial in February.
Okay, so then I'm in agreement with our settlement amount, since it's not our position to override attorneys that have come to an agreement in a legal situation. So, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to support those staffs.
Mr. Johnson?
We're supposed to be the stewards of the citizens' money. One thing you have here is you have an individual who at one time was incarcerated for breaking the law and obviously was convicted of it. You have a settlement agreement between two attorneys. But it's no different if a man went out and won the lottery, or came into some kind of big money, and they owe the county money because of the cost of incarceration. I think we'd be remiss not looking after the citizens' money in such a manner, and I wholeheartedly support the county's actions. And we see so many frivolous suits, and I don't know whether this one, obviously, we were at fault somewhat, but it's up to us to watch the county's money, sometimes not us having just bleeding hearts because somebody had an accident, but to go back and collect the money that is duly owed to the county and watch our citizens, the taxpayers' dollars.
Okay, Ms. Post?
So, I would make the point, though, that six years has gone by since he was released from incarceration. There was no attempt at pursuing the claim prior to the Votran bus running him over, and him filing suit against the county for injuries. And in regards to, I would ask, I would ask the rest of the council, what is the purpose of the county council approving settlements at all, if we use the basis that we don't override settlement agreements between attorneys? What's the point of having it come in front of us? I mean, we should just be able to check a box somewhere, and, yep, but apparently, if it's just approving it because it's in front of us and not actually looking at it?
Is that a motion to call the vote?
Well, I'm, I'm still, I'm still talking.
All in favor, that's the purpose of calling the vote, that ends the discussion. According to Robert Truitt's order, it's not cutting you off, it's just, the debate is cut off based upon, if we, if this passes, all in favor of approving, calling the vote, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to one. Now, we will call the question. Understand that a yes on this vote will mean that we will pay $93,000 instead of the $75,000 that was agreed upon between two parties, both represented by legal counsel. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion fails, six to one. Is there a motion for the item S?
Also move that we approve item S.
Item, motion is made to approve item S, which is the settlement seconded by Ms. Denny's. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. Now, we will move to item... Keep them going. Which one?
Z.
And that's pull for a, is pull for a vote?
No, it's just pulled for discuss.
Pull for discuss, comment. Just comment on item Z.
I would like, yeah, staff to just, I, I think it's important that we, we let everyone know that we are constantly at work in many areas, and our watershed is one of the main ones. And here's Gemini and Daily on Springs feasibility analysis. This is just an ongoing thing with us, and I just wanted you to emphasize what we're doing here.
Certainly, Ms. Wheeler. And Mr. Chair, council members, good morning. Mike Alrick, Water Resources and Utilities Director for, for our county. It's, it really is a privilege, and thank you for, I couldn't have asked you to script it any better, because really, this, this dates back to 2014, when the county council at that point in time had a countywide workshop to talk about our impaired waters within, within Volusia County. We're not alone by any means, it's through the entire state of Florida, but, you know, that very first meeting was creating that awareness and where we need to go forward. And, you know, quite frankly, that, that first, that first meeting led to 2015, when we started our first water quality plan that was built at the staff level, which I would call the 10,000-foot view. Subsequently, the state has, you know, started really focusing on, on many more things, and certainly with the, the new governor, and in total, you know that water quality is at the top of his agenda. So, you know, as, as we proceeded along through 2016, the, the state legislature approved the Florida Aquifer Protection Act, which also named three of our springs as outstanding Florida springs. Florida springs, Gemini, Blue, and DeLeon. And from that, of course, that led to some more prospective basin management action plans, which have all been approved most recently. That's more the 5,000-foot view. So now, here we are with this. This task assignment here, Terry Lowry with Jones Edmonds, who is also doing this in Marion County and Hernando as well, you know, for their springs, brings us to this point. This is really the action plan. This is the action plan of combining not only engineering, but also financial feasibility at this point in time. This is probably the most important of the roles that we're going to do. We're actually going to put some numbers to this stuff and really measure the impact. And it's, again, as I've said multiple times, it's not about how much all of us do separately, but how much we all do together. This is a 100% grant, which council approved in December. The task assignments, not only with Jones Edmonds here, but also item A is the financial, I'm sorry, AA is the financial portion of this plan as well. Again, 100% funded through DEP, so now it's time to take this engineering and feasibility and put it into play.
Thank you, Mike. I just think this is such an important thing, I just wanted to emphasize how it is, how important it is to us as a county. And Terry, thank you, and Mike, thank you for constantly being out there, looking for grants and everything that you're doing, and we're on top of this.
Okay. And thank you, Mike. Mike attended the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council meeting last week and made a nice presentation on what we're doing with water, and very much appreciated. I think everyone there got something from it. Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to thank staff for that, and this is all the quiet work that gets done behind the scenes. And Mr. Rucktenwald, I think our staff is, is just, I would say, experts in a lot of these areas, and these grants that are available. And Mr. Ulrich, I want to thank you for not saying BMAP. That's our Basin Management Action Plan. Every industry has their own acronyms, and we tend to use those, so thank you for not saying that. But this is big, this is the beginning. And you're right, we started at the 10,000-foot, you know, looking down at it, but right now, we're to the implementation stage, and it's, you're just getting stronger and stronger, so thank you. And all of Volusia County, Ms. Wheeler, thank you for bringing this up, because this is what we're talking about.
Okay. And we'll now move to item two, Marilyn Ford. And this is a Dynamic Master Plan review. This kind of coincides with our State of the County, where we set the accomplishments, and this is a part of that, as well as where we are going forward to satisfy the, what's in our charter. Marilyn?
Marilyn Chandler Ford, Director of Special Projects. Good morning, councilman, and welcome, Councilman Gertman and Councilman Johnson. First time I've had an opportunity to meet you. Congratulations. This typically would be a quarterly review, and contained in the agenda packet is the fourth quarter of 2018, October through December, but it's also the time where we look back to 2018 as an entire year. And you are correct, Chairman Kelly, that last year, that last week, the State of the County message went over a lot of these. To review for everybody, the vision for Volusia County is to be a community rich with resources and opportunities today and for generations to come. Our mission is to provide responsive and fiscally responsible services for the health, safety, and quality of life of our citizens. There really are three bedrocks that councils as far back as 2006 have talked about, and those are really the linchpins or the bedrocks of our success. Thriving communities, economic and financial vitality, and excellence in government. The Dynamic Master Plan is set by every department and division, and it becomes really a high-level view of the critical things they're going to accomplish in the coming years. Some they'll accomplish immediately in 2019 or 18, and some are perpetual, something like customer service. We're probably never going to fully achieve or satisfy that. So instead of, there's so much information for 2018 in your packet, and then the 2019 goals and objectives, that in today's presentation, I'm just going to go through a few highlights, and I'm not going to read every single one on the slides, because I know you can do it yourself, and you've probably prepared ahead of time. In January, the Homeless Shelter Hope Place opened, and it serves homeless families with children and unaccompanied youth under 26. And I know we've heard a lot about that, and I think we can't talk too much about it, because it really is a unique project for this community, and the county council in the county was instrumental in providing support to make that a reality. February, Save Our Springs and Rivers, nearly a quarter million dollar grant was received and approved by council from the U.S. Environmental and Protection Agency for a three-year education and outreach project. Moving ahead to April, beach ramp improvements, there were additional ramps, there were express ramps, there were more litter patrols actually started in January, and a number of things that Coastal reported about the end of the year. Many things making our beach service improved and better for all of our beachgoers. The Southwest Regional Advanced Wastewater Treatment Facility, the ribbon was cut in April. That facility in DeBury was recognized by the Medium Wastewater System of the Year, and so the county's Water Resource and Utilities Section really got kudos for that. In addition, it was named by Water and Waste Project Magazine as one of the nation's top projects for 2018. We talk a lot about water, wastewater not so much. So it's really exciting to see one of our own projects be recognized nationally and within this state. In May, Smyrna Dunes Park Boardwalk opened, and there were some other things, the splash pads at Sun Splash Park were reopened over the summer. June, we had the sinking of Tug Everglades and Lady Filomena. In 2018 alone, 11 artificial reefs were added to the county's inventory, and so there's 160 since 1980. And that is phenomenal, because not only does it provide recreational opportunities, but it really helps the local marine industry, as well as local fishermen and sports fishermen who like to go out for excursions. In August, the Sheriff's Office Evidence Storage Facility, that's been working on, they moved into a modular building, and that is due for completion in the third quarter of this year. And I know Councilman Johnson will probably be as excited as Sheriff Chitwood when that building opens. September, the East Central Rail Trail, 20.2 miles of trail from Osteen to the Brevard County Line were opened. October, Zero Debt and the General Fund, we probably can't say enough about that. Volusia County is virtually unique in terms of achieving that goal, and that's something that prior councils and last year's council really worked toward. November, the 37th Annual Farm Tour. Volusia County's not just about parks and beaches, our agricultural industries are huge, they produce nearly $800 million in terms of their annual impact on the county's economy. And then in December, the Court and Central Services Warehouse, the building foundation was poured. I won't pass there today on my way here, I can tell you the sides are up. They expect that project to be substantially complete by May, and I think you're going to hear more about that in the next presentation about the capital project schedule. That concludes my report of highlights for 2018. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
George, Mr. Rucktenwald.
I'll defer, if there's any questions of the council, and I just wanted to make a brief comment when you're done.
Ms. Wheeler?
Marilyn, I was just going to thank you again for all your hard work on that, and it's an amazing plan for us to go by, and it gives us all accolades on things we've worked hard for, things that had been worked on, started years ago, like when Ben was here, and are now coming to fruition, to keep it in front of us. And I just wanted to have a personal thought to you. As you all know, Marilyn's husband passed away, and he was a dear friend, and again, my heart goes out to you. We all loved him. Thank you so much for sharing him.
Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Marilyn. You're, this lady is just short of genius, and I mean that in every way imaginable. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Are you, I don't want to get ahead of you, are you going to go into the 2019, are we done with, are you done with the presentation? I don't want to get ahead of you.
Well, I talked about 2018, but if you would like to talk about 2019, I can do that.
Not really, because that's where I want to go. So, Mr. Rucktenwald, you and I talked about this. So going forward for 2019, and there's matrices of, from the departments, Mr. Rucktenwald, what I would like to have, and I think would help council go forward for the years, we set goals and look at the budget, and there's, I know some requests coming in for some pretty large ticket items. We have within Volusia County, our depart, some departments that need to be strengthened internally. Our own house needs to be strengthened, just like we're doing for warehouses and some of this, and I'm going to use our IT department as an example. 10 years ago, we had 80 IT employees, 80. Right now, we have 71. And as quickly as the information technology sector is changing and growing, we know that if we install anything with this generation, we're already outdated, but we have to get more competitive, we have to strengthen that department, because they're not bricks and mortar. It's like you and I were talking about, they're not bricks and mortar, but they are the very heartbeat of everything that goes on, and I think a while ago, even our sheriff's department had an issue with their network director that we stepped in, you know, and collaborated, and helped strengthen that department, too. So across the spectrum here in Volusia County, we've got to strengthen our departments, so, and then Kim Westbury, we're losing her, January 31st, she's in drop program. There goes another senior director that I'm sure we will be, or if you're not already interviewing for, but when department heads present their budgets, they do a cover sheet, it's called a project sheet or cover letter, right, with the departments?
Right.
So what I would like to see, what I would like to have, is the last three years of cover sheets that every department submitted with their concerns, because it's my understanding, that's where, that's where their ask is, and where they see the weakness or what they need to be strengthened within their department. So I would like to see what our department heads have identified as needing strengthening, because we need to look at our budget, because we went to a complete rollback. We went to, so that means there's no wiggle room in the budget. If it's not in there now, it's not in there. But going forward, and before we look at any other major funding request, we have got to make sure our home base is covered, because we're going to get to the point, when the weakness is there, they're going to look at us and say, well, you know it all along, we told you about it, and you did nothing about it. I don't want to get in that position, and I think that's the strength that the megahertz, 800 megahertz radio station, radios, that was identified, and staff took a look at that and projected that out for cash payment, we're doing that with complete cash. So it's a very effective tool, but I think it's going to be critical now, going forward, for council to look at, look at what's going on, what they need strengthened, and how we're going to fund that. So I'm asking that, Mr. Rucktenwald, if you could make that, how many departments officially do we have?
Well, we have 70 funds in over 40 different, you know, areas that we would be getting, because some areas have combined funds to fund them. So, yes, I could put all that together, it's the perfect timing, because we are getting ready. I've already asked, typically, the holiday season, people come back and they start in with their capital, capital equipment, and we get building and starting on the budget. So it's perfect timing for that. A little later, I was going to discuss with you at my time a little bit about going forward, because there are things internally that we do need to strengthen. I think that's natural, given the cycles that we've been through, and I've heard quite a bit of discussion this past year, and I couldn't agree with you anymore. I mean, the infrastructure you don't see, you know, in this case is our IT, and more and more, when you're talking to businesses and things out there, even on a larger scale, when they're locating, it used to be, you know, what is your water capability, you know, road capacity, and now more and more, it's becoming, you know, what is your, what's our IT availability, what kind of fiber do we have, what kind of ability do we have to run our large systems, and we have those very same questions that we run through a very large network here. So, perfect example.
That will tell the story, not just for me, but, you know, for those coming on council, too, it'll give an opportunity to look at a snapshot of where we've been and where we may go. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Marilyn, I want to thank you for your hard work, but also want to say something about Bob. That's a loss to the community. I thought a lot of Bob, he was a very innovative law enforcement officer, became a friend while I was a sheriff, and afterwards, dedicated his life to public service, and he's a loss to the community, and I know a loss to you, but thank you for allowing him to be a part of us. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, George?
I do, I have one more thing, I'd like to indulge a few, just a moment. Today, you know, this body of work that Marilyn has put before us, is, you know, as you said, Ms. Denny's, it is genius, really, but it's only a part of what Marilyn's done over her 30-year career here. And I'm sad to report that this will be the last update she'll be giving us, because Marilyn is going to retire soon. She's had over 30 years of service here with Corrections. She literally did work her way up, but another body of work that's out there that, again, people don't see, and we're talking about IT, is all the work that she did at Corrections in terms of, not only, of course, running Corrections at the later part of her career, but building up the jail management system that we use today. And it's using statistical analysis that really very, very few people can do, and she's done so well, and really, you know, is nationally recognized for her work in Corrections. And so it's a big loss, but I'm very happy that she's, you know, getting to retire and pursue things, but I would just want to mention, and she does not want any, you know, big fanfare or anything, but I cannot let this moment go without publicly thanking her for all of her work, and again, people do not realize, you talk about behind the scenes, the stuff that she has done behind the scenes is monumental, and is actually emulated now across the country. And again, this work here, the Dynamic Master Plan, she pretty much single-handedly put that together, and put all that together with our staff, and it is the guidebook by which we go. So she's going to be sorely, sorely missed.
You took a lot of my comments out of-
Sorry, sir.
I'm sorry, I read your name, I know I could have interrupted, but this, you're talking about national recognition, this did receive national recognition last year at NACO, one of two awards that this county received from national recognition, it is. And it's kind of our backbone of keeping everything- And it's kind of our backbone of keeping everything in perspective of where we are and where we're going. And I was going to mention that she's not, this would be her last presentation to us. It would be missed, but I think we ought to give her a standing ovation, even though she doesn't want it. Marilyn, I do think that you're going to have to get one more thing done for us. We're going to have to have a picture with you and all of us for us to remember you by. We know you don't care about thinking maybe of us, but I'm just kidding. As much, but let's get a picture. If you can come up here and we get Jeff or someone to take a picture or...
Yes, you do. Yes.
Well, we thought you should be up here.
Yes.
Yeah. I think you should be up here.
Come on up.
My question is, now, this, we are definitely going to be continuing this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just a minute. I think we need a motion to accept this, don't we, Dan, George, somebody?
So moved.
Motion is made to accept this. Motion made and seconded. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion to accept the item carries unanimously. And we'll move to item number three, and this is Tad Casbeer, who is going to tell us some more news.
Good morning. Tad Casbeer, Volusia County County Engineer, presenting the Capitol Project Schedule. You should have received an executive summary that was handed out this morning. Apologize, that didn't get included with the overall package. That will certainly be something that we will be doing going forward. This is something the county manager recommended we do. Once we got up to around ninety pages with this package, it gets a little bit cumbersome. So, this is something you can take along with the Gantt chart and have with you on a regular basis. This way, if you get any questions about where a project is or what it's doing, you've got a quick answer. So, if you have any recommendations, and you see something you'd like us to tweak or change on it, we're always welcome to suggestions. All right. Talking about the first quarter of the fiscal year, we completed a couple of projects. The Branch Jail Roof Replacement Phase Two was completed back in October, and then the Spring to Spring Three-A Trail down at DeBerry was completed in December. We had a couple of projects that got pushed into this current quarter. The Hope Place Library had some issues with the manufacturer being able to provide the glass in a reasonable timeframe, so that got pushed into this quarter. And then the High Bridge Park Project, all the constructed improvements are in place. We're still working out the water treatment with DEP, so that got pushed back into this quarter. This quarter, we have several different projects that are going to be completed. We're excited about. First one is the Michael Ader Bridge, formerly known as the Turnbull Bay Bridge. I knew you'd be excited about that. We also have the Ocean Center Roof Repair we'll be completing. There were some issues with flashing, and that's all been taken care of, so they should be completing that this quarter. Fire Station Number Thirty-Six will be completed over in the southeast Deltona. We have the Argosy Park Parking Area Beach Access of Norman by the Sea. And then Halifax Wastewater Treatment Facility Rehabilitation Project will also be completed. We also, last but not least, have the Volusia County Sheriff's Office Evidence Center will be completing one quarter early in this quarter, so we're very excited about that. Give them as much time as possible to start moving out of the other one and moving everything into this one. So, we have several different projects that were added to the list. Some of them are new projects entering design. We've got the Sixteenth Avenue Off Beach Park and Access Project. We've got Household Hazardous Waste Drop-Off that's being added out at the Timoca Landfill. And then we have two signal projects, mast arm projects, one at Pioneer Trail and Enterprise in New Smyrna Beach, and the other at Saxon Boulevard and Marketplace in Orange City. We have three new projects that are added to the list that are actually going straight to construction. They previously weren't on the list, because they were generally considered smaller projects, but by request, we've added them to the list. We've got the Hope Place Recreational Area, the Branch Jail Roof Replacement Phase Three, and then the Advanced Meteorine Project for Mike. So, that's a quick rundown of the things that are going on, upcoming issues that you need to be aware of. The eight-hundred megahertz project is moving forward. The scope is being prepared and should be set for an April, first week of April advertisement, so that'll be moving forward. And then, as you note, on the project sheet for Lemon Bluff, there was a public meeting back in October that didn't quite go as well as we would have liked. Some of the citizens had some issues, and the staff had consented to bringing it back in front of the council for further discussion and consideration at that point. We'll schedule that at some other time, unless you had a specific question you wanted to ask about that right now. And then, following me, we have Rick Carl giving an update on the Daytona Beach Airport Terminal update. So, if you have any questions?
We need to accept this report as well, I believe. So, are you, because I have these, yours is item two, and then Rick's is under item three, which I know this is all tied together. Pardon?
I'm item three, and I think Rick is four.
Okay. Ms. Wheeler.
I just wanted to ask, I know this is trivial, but the main marquee for the Ocean Center, it seems like this has been going on a long time. I know how ridiculous it is, but it is an important item.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, can I see the end in sight?
Yes, ma'am. If I recall correctly, at the State of the County address, they were out there demolishing the existing --
They were.
And that was all the fun and exciting noise out front, so.
And when are they looking at that completion?
At this point, they haven't changed the schedule to move it forward, so it's still set for the third quarter.
Okay. And the other thing I want to ask, staff, what, how do we go about and where do we place the Main Street Bridge that's going to be down the road? But I just don't want, this needs to be on the schedule somewhere, that we are looking at this and what we're going to be doing.
I think that would be something to come at another point, Ms.
Yeah, I think that, exactly, to the chair's point, that's something that we need to officially look at and add, because there's quite a bit to that project in particular. So, when we do, we've got several things coming forward. We're going to be talking about Capitol Projects, including the half-cent sales tax that goes forward. There'll be project that you'll be approving our list and our needs, and that certainly falls in the category under that. So, there's several places where we can talk about that going ahead. We typically don't like to put stuff on the active list here until there has been an actual action of some sort, and particularly money, you know. But like I say, we, it meets before a committee of all of your major department heads that are involved in any kind of Capitol project, and then, so we put it on from concept all the way up, but we really need usually your action to make sure that it's on that list, because there are other, like I say, five-year forecasts and other lists that exist out there. It's been a yeoman's job, and Ms. Dennis is the person who asked for this type of thing to be put together several years ago, and it really has helped, because it puts everybody in the room that could touch a project, and we work on a quarterly basis. So, it has prevented things from falling in the cracks. It keeps our workload even, so that we know what's going on across the board. And then, the idea that so many of these projects takes several years and do cross multiple councils, so that people can see, you know, what's going on and what's coming again in the future. So, this has been a great effort, and of course, it is part of the Dynamic Master Plan. It's just a subset that we talk separately about because of its importance.
Okay. Ms. Dennis.
Thank you. And to that, Mr. Reckonwald, actually, you can thank the Turnbull Bay Bridge project.
To inspire you for that.
We'll say at the time, lack of.
Right.
And now, today is done. So, it just goes to show you that we made some lemonade that's been very effective organization-wide, and I thank staff for working with council to come up with a really great, great update with this. So, we're done. Are all those little barriers that we drive by in the little light on one end gone that's timing it?
No, they're still cleaning up. They've still got some minor things. There's what we consider substantial completion, and then there's final completion, where everything is cleaned up, all the materials moved offside, all the trash picked up, and you can't even tell they were there, and that's still pending.
I will tell you, those that live in the area, I have heard nothing but great reports from our citizens appreciating the way it's been held and the detour and the timing of that light, because that could have been a really, really bad situation from our first responders to the businesses and the citizens out there. So, thank you for that, and we'll be doing a ground, not a groundbreaking, ribbon cutting. Yeah, we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting on the Turnbull. This is huge. I'm sorry, guys, but for years, when I first took office, this was the issue. So, if you think you've got grandiose plans to get a project done, that was the end of 2012. 2019, seven years later, seven years later, we finished a bridge. So, it's worth working for, and thank you with staff, and I say that in every positive light it can be. No, it's, I got another bridge. I got another bridge, Ben. We got another one we're going to work on in your district, so let's go.
We're right on schedule with the seven years, which is about what had happened in 1949, when the City of Womans Beach requested to replace their bridge. They got a new drawbridge seven years later. So, we're still working within those times. That was in the paper today. A little trivial bit, but thought I'd, I need a motion to accept this report. Motion made by Dr. Lowry, seconded by Ms. Wheeler. Any objection to the motion of accepting the report? Hearing none. The motion passes unanimously. And before we go to the next one, if some of you that are sitting here, that are here quite often, may have noticed there's a section over here on the right side from -- You stole my thunder. I was trying to think of a nice way to say "the" University High School of Volusia County, but I'll just say it that way. If you all stand, are y'all all in government or civics or something, or you are? So, just stand and let us see what you're interested in, see how many of you are going to wind up being here in the coming years. It isn't always this exciting. Sometimes, it's not quite as exciting as this, but it is taking care of the business, and hope you can get a little snapshot or bird's eye view of some of the things that happens. This is where, as somebody said, the sausage is made, so this is what we try to do, and thank you all for being interested and wish you the best. And you're welcome to stay. I don't think you have a -- You have five more minutes? I was going to wait until after the next item, but I went ahead and did it now, so you can have a seat. And as you slip out, don't worry about it, we'll carry on. Thank you for being here. We'll move to item number four. Rick Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, Rick Carl, your Airport Director. I'm here with Karen Feaster, Deputy Airport Director. We're going to go through briefly, give you an update of where we are with the terminal renovations. This has been a long, a long process. It's enormously complicated, all the things that are going on, that go on at the airport and that we're building around, and we've had great help from Mike Weigel, who's going to be our Construction Manager. And I can't stress enough how much help we've had internally from our County Engineer, Tad Casbeer, and Laura Laser, who is also in his office, is an architect. We're about to, from this process here, we want to, we're trying to be transparent all along with you and the public and walk through this, so no one is surprised. It's pretty, this has been before the council several times, and want to give you an update. I, we're going to be moving the next phase into the bidding process, so I want to thank in advance all the folks at Janine Jennings' office, who, this is enormously complicated, it's so many different moving parts and different sources of funding. But I do want to say to the, for the benefit of the public, I say this often, that this project is, although it's not grant-funded like most of our projects, it is funded by the Airport Fund, which is not funded by ad valorem tax dollars. The airport is a separate, standalone enterprise fund. We earn our own money. This is coming out, this is going to be a loan that's coming out of the airport funds. So, it's important to say that. It's estimated right now to be about $12.4 million. So, this will be something that will not be a burden of our taxpayers through ad valorem tax dollars. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Karen Feaster, Deputy Airport Director. Ms. County Manager, do you have any comments before we go through this?
Just another one, another point I'd like to make, as when this project, you know, was brought forth, to the point that's been made earlier, this is part of keeping our airport competitive where it needs to be. And one of the themes, you know, today, you're looking at, you know, some of the outer finishes and things that we discussed previously, some big structural changes. But the idea is, as we put this together, is to make our airport very easy for not only our citizens to use, but very easy for airlines to come in and work here. So, there's a, we'll talk a little bit about, you know, the concept of common use and flexibility that airlines need nowadays, and it's evidenced by the fact that, you know, we've been able to pick up airlines just recently, and, you know, it's one of those, it allows them to kind of test-drive us where maybe they wouldn't have done that before. And I think most times when we've done things like that, I'm confident in the great staff and people we have, we win people over when we get them here. When we built the Ocean Center, we started bringing people in there, you know, the wow factor, and once they're there, we have an uncommon retention rate for convention centers. To Rick's credit and the credit out there at the airport, you know, we have relationships with Delta that go back decades, and the idea of what we can do once we get them there. So, that's built into this thinking as we're modernizing this terminal to make sure that we can do the same thing. Rick?
Thank you. And that, thank you for mentioning that, because the technology component is a very important part of this. These airlines come in, they want to be able to plug and play common use areas, and so we have, this is not just cosmetics. There's a backbone of infrastructure that goes into this thing. So, if Karen Feaster, please, Deputy Airport Director, she'll go through the, go quickly and highlight some of the slides.
Thank you. So, again, the concept of this project was coastal ecology, so you'll see that in the colors and materials. Go perfect with this area. And then, what we did is we showed pictures of our current and then what it will look like. So, this is our front curb, and this is the proposed changes. So, you see new signage, coral throughout on the walls. And then, this is our atrium area, and this is the biggest structural change. You'll see the column, or excuse me, the balcony here will be coming out, really open up the terminal building. There'll be a water feature, again, the ecology theme, trazo floors, carpet throughout, make it easy, open, and stress-free. And ticket counter area, and these are the changes. You'll see the digital signage in the back, and then, as Rick and George mentioned, common use gates on some of the ones on the right-hand side, further east, further west. And then, the second floor area existing, and this will be the new look of our second floor. And then, for the concourse, it's the existing concourse, and then, changes here, you'll see digital gate signs, so they'll be able to provide all the information, weather, time, whatever the airline would like to put in there.
all the information, weather, time, whatever the airline would like to put in there, give them the opportunity. And the business center will be opened up. It's complimentary to all of our passengers. There'll be a mother's room, it's a new amenity, water fountains with bottle fillers. It's always thoughts of the customer amenities. And also the gates that are not leased will become common use gates, as George mentioned, so airlines can, we can move them around and whatnot. And then just real quick, some of the millwork. This is a look, the wave field, the example of a gate area and the furnishings and the back millwork. And again, digital signage. And then the rental car area. And the rental car area is all funded through our customer facility charge fees, so that will all match and new millwork as well. And then just the signage, this is just an example of the sign package, but it'll all be the blue, new blue color that we've been using and new fonts, make it very simple, easy to find, really clean things up a bit, is another example. And the gate, again, as I mentioned, the bottom portion will be digital. That's everything. So excited.
Thank you.
Just one quick comment. I noticed when you went through there and you showed the mother's room, the ladies' room, but there's no men's room. I guess it's like...
No.
It's near the baggage compartment.
There are. For you, for you, Mr. Chair.
We had to value engineer that out, but we're trying to get it back.
Some of us, as we age, like before we get on a flight for an hour and a half or so, like to, so anyway.
We'll take care of it.
No, I guess my point is, is it going to a unisex?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. The existing restrooms will stay. We do have family restrooms as well as, which we've already renovated the restrooms. That project has already been underway. The mother's room is just an addition.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that there still would be a men's room, right?
And just one other comment, the wayfinding signs outside, they look terrible. It's not part of this project, but it's a grant-funded project that we're gonna be redoing those. We wanted to wait until we got the signage designed for the interior. So they'll be matching, the signs themselves will be the same, but they'll have different color and different fonts. So that's my apologies for the delay, and that's been a long time coming. These are huge signs. And we'll also be doing other projects as well. So thank you for your support. If you have any questions or if you'd like to come out, Ms. Gertman, I hope you will come out and let us give you a tour. There's a lot going on out there. It's nice to...
I look forward to it.
Yeah, make sure you take that one. That's one of the, you get to go where nobody, no man has gone before or woman, so you get...
I appreciate that, but I'm also laughing because when I went for the ribbon cutting last week, there was a man in the women's bathroom. So, he's like, "Did I come in the wrong bathroom?" I'm like, "Yes, you did."
It was not me.
I wondered.
It was not me, though. That's clear that. Thank you, Rick and Karen.
Thank you for your support. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We need a motion to accept this report. Motion made by...
Second.
Lowry, seconded by Wheeler to accept the report. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. We'll move, item number five has been requested to continue unless that's been changed, Clay.
No, sir. There is a change in the date to be continued to.
Okay.
The applicant initially requested to February 5th, but now is requesting to March 19th. Then that way, they can wrap up not only the rezoning, but an associated vacation ride away with the same date.
I need a motion to continue the item, case Z-1807, continued to March 19th. Motion made and seconded. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion passes and the item will be continued to March 19th. Item six.
Good morning, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. If the council will allow me, I'd like to talk about items six and seven at the same time since they are pertaining to the same piece of property. This is a 3.63 acre parcel located at 1680 Tomoka Farms Road near Daytona Beach. This is similar to requests that y'all have seen in the past. In front of you is a location and aerial map that's on page 6-24 and 6-25 of your agenda packet. This shows you the property that is located south of Interstate 4, along Tomoka Farms Road, and as you can see, is west of I-95. The aerial helps point out some of the issues that we're facing in that, in the center of this property is the wetlands that feed into Spruce Creek, basically. This is Spruce Creek at one point. And the property we're talking about is west of that area. Going on, this shows you what the future land use is under the current adopted map and what is proposed. These are pages 6-26 and 6-27 of your agenda packet. As you can see, the existing land use is forestry resource, which requires a large track of land to be developed. In other words, it's identified for large properties that are primarily utilized for silviculture and those types of uses. In the center is environmental systems corridor, and then towards the east is the rural designation. The applicant is requesting that the property to the west, which is currently forestry resource, be changed to rural so that that way the appropriate zoning can be applied to it. Because as you can see, the property is relatively limited in size. The property we're talking about is 3.63 acres. The area that is environmental systems corridor is about 3.1 acres, and the property as currently rural has about 3.3 acres. The next item is pertaining to the zoning. That's item seven on your agenda, and this is coming out of page 6-28 and 6-29 of your agenda packet. And this shows you the reason why we are going forward with these rezonings from the forestry resource and going into basically a change so that that way this western portion of this property has a zoning and a land use that's consistent with the lot size. I want to point out, at the south end, you'll see the A2A of that property. That was the request that came in front of this council several months ago pertaining to a similar type of property. So what we're doing is we're consistently going forward with this. I can tell you that staff is looking as whether or not we need to look at this administratively in the future because there are numerous lots in this area, and we need to clean this up so that the property owners have the ability to utilize their property as proper in regards to our comprehensive plan and zoning standards. The item went forward to the PLDRC with a staff recommendation of approval. The PLDRC also is coming forward with a staff recommendation to the county council. We have not received any objections via email or in the public hearings. If there's any questions from either staff, we'll be glad to answer them.
This is a public hearing. I have no one to, from the public to speak, so we'll close that portion of the item. Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move approval of ordinance 2019-1, small-scale future land use amendment from the forestry resource FR designation to the rural R designation of 3.63 acres located on at 1680 Tomoka Farms Road, Daytona Beach, case CPA-18-009.
Motion made by Denny, seconded by Wheeler. Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and we've already had on item seven, we've had the presentation by staff. This is a public hearing. I have, again, no one wishing to speak from the public. We'll close the public hearing portion. And Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move approval of rezoning of 3.63 acres located at 1680 Tomoka Farms Road, Daytona Beach, from forestry resource FR to rural agricultural A-2K, Z-18-106.
Motion made by Denny, seconded by Wheeler. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous, and we'll move to item number eight. Mr. Irvin.
Good morning. Once again, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. This is a special exception for a garage apartment. According to the zoning category of A1, that type of use can only be approved if it goes through the special exception process. This is a 15.1 acre parcel located at 3799 Watermelon Lane, near the city of New Smyrna Beach. In front of you is, from your agenda packet, pages 8-14 and 8-15, which provides you with a location map and an aerial of the subject property. This is kind of a unique situation in that the property owner is coming in and trying to reuse some of the existing structures out there on the site. There is an existing 800-square-foot home that they would like to convert into a garage apartment that would be consistent with our standards, and they would also like to renovate the remaining portion of the property so that that way it can be used for a single-family home. There's a companion variance that accompanied this application to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. The PLDRC recommended approval of the variance, subject to the county council approving the special exception. In front of you, you can see it's basically, we're taking and converting an existing structure, so therefore, as long as it complies with the standards, we don't have a problem. The variance has addressed the setback issues. So staff has made a recommendation of approval of both the variance and the special exception, and it's coming to you from the PLDRC, also with a similar recommendation of approval of the special exception. So if you approve the special exception, the variance will also take effect. Again, we have not had any comments in regards to objections or any other comments or questions. If there's any questions of me or the staff, I'll be glad to answer them.
This, too, is a public hearing. I have no one wishing to speak from the public, so we'll close that portion. Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move approval of the special exception for garage apartment on 15.1 acre prime agricultural A1 zone property located at 3799 Watermelon Lane, New Smyrna Beach, case S-18-110.
Motion made by Denny, seconded by Wheeler. Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item none nine, and this, too, is a public hearing. And we will open that public hearing portion.
Good morning. Once again, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. This is a staff-initiated amendment to the non-residential design standards that we currently implement on non-residential properties that abut our thoroughfare roads. This is consistent with the council's directions to look at and identify any changes to the code to ensure that we are keeping forward with our economic development opportunities. What we currently have are standards that are in place that are very applicable to, say, a shopping center, professional office building. So therefore, you see a lot of penetration and a lot of design standards. They're consistent with a lot of our local governments, such as our city's overlays for their primary roadways. The issue at hand is that does not necessarily convey onto industrial development. And what we've seen is that larger industrial developments have difficulties because we're requiring false canopies, false windows, a variety of different other architectural treatment, which drive up the cost and are not necessarily needed to ensure that we can have a pleasant and aesthetically attractive area. So staff has worked on modifying those standards to ensure that we still have an architectural standard that would apply to these larger-scale buildings, such as a half-million or million-square-foot warehouse distribution building, but still also be within the general confines of what would be necessary in order for them to come to Volusia County and establish such a condition. So what you see is that we are still requiring requirements, such as movement of the buildings. We don't allow for metal buildings. We require improvements in regards to landscaping. We require that they utilize the retention ponds for an aesthetically pleasing water property. And then also making sure that the more utilitarian types of spaces are confined behind the building or screened. So the whole point is to make sure that we are coming up with reasonable standards that can be implemented by the developers who are looking to try and establish more industrial-based buildings here along our main thoroughfares. It went to the PLDRC with a, obviously, since we drafted it, we thought it would be pretty good. So it went forward to the PLDRC with a staff recommendation of approval, and it's coming to you today with a recommendation from the PLDRC as well. We also sent it to the VCAR organization for their review and comments, and they've also provided favorable comments. And actually, came forward a few standards that were a little bit more strict than what staff had been proposing. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
There are no comments from any, no cards filled out for comments from the public. We'll close the public participation portion, council. This is basically cleaning up internal ordinances that we have, and I think you're gonna be continuing to work on others as we go along. It's something that should be done as, as we progress and things need to be improved. And I see, I believe this is just one of those that will improve the process for not only staff, but for those that are applying as well.
Yes, sir.
Their motion. Motion by Wheeler to approve, seconded by Lowry. Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item number 10, and this is a public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Irvin.
Good morning, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. State of Florida requires that every city and county come up with a comprehensive plan, and one of the elements that you have to have is your transportation element. What you see before you are the goals, objectives, and policies that are contained in our transportation element, and they basically give us a direction into how we are coordinating with other agencies, how we are going to develop a multimodal system, how we're going to address the current and future needs of our population in regards to transportation. So therefore, we've, as staff, went through this and looked at it. It's been a while since we looked at these goals, objectives, and policies, and we wanted to make sure we were updating them to be consistent with current state law, also being consistent with some of the policy plans that are being implemented by the River to Sea Transportation Planning Organization, as well as FDOT. What you see before you is a series of changes. I can reference that on, starting on page 10-64 of your agenda packet, is a very detailed matrix which identifies the changes that we made to each one of the policies and what the changes were. If the council approves the transmittal of this amendment, it would then go to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and the Volusia County Growth Management Commission, where it will be reviewed by a variety of different other state agencies. In approximately 60 to 90 days, we will have this item back with a series of comments, hopefully not many, and we'll be able to go forward with the adoption of this. If there's any questions about any of the policies or any of the changes or the process, I'll be glad to answer them.
This is a public hearing. I have no one wishing to speak. We'll close the public hearing, and we need a motion for the transmittal for the amendment to the comp plan.
So move.
Motion made by Gertman, seconded by Wheeler. Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item number 11. And Mr. Irvin, you're off the hook for a minute.
That's definitely not my strong thing.
Thank you. Ryan. Donna, did you want to introduce anything?
Yes.
Okay.
The agenda item before you today is one of our year-end cleanup agendas, and Ryan Osowski, the accounting director, will walk you through it. Thank you.
Good morning, council. Brian Osowski, accounting director. What you have before you is one of the parts of closing the books for September 30, 2018. We participate in many grants, and most of them are on a reimbursement basis, which means the expenditures are made before the revenue comes in. The largest grants of that type at the end of the fiscal year were FEMA, Hurricane Matthew, and Hurricane Irma. So these grants are in a position where they need a loan to cover their balance as of September 30th because the revenue has not come in yet. In the item, you have the amount that has been received to date on all of these grants. The other grants have mostly covered already between September 30th and the current date. The hurricane grants are actively being pursued with FDEM. There is 7.2 million that we have already received for Hurricane Irma. There is another $6 million that is pending at the state treasurer's office that's already been released from the Florida Division of Emergency Management, and we will continue to work on recovering those balances. As of now, we do need to have those balances covered by the general fund, and that's what this agenda item is asking permission to do.
Okay. Now, this is just basically balancing the books. I mean, it's something you have to do. We had monies expended. We're expecting revenue. We have to cover that so that everything does balance.
Move approval.
Exactly.
Motion made to approve by Post, seconded by Wheeler. Any further discussion? Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Reckonwall, I'm gonna go back to this when we talk about the requests being, come into the county. We went to complete rollback last year. I'm gonna keep saying this over and over again, and here's a snapshot of where we are. We are making loans to these other funds because of lack of reimbursement, mainly from FEMA. So I'm just putting another...
Right.
Asterisk and apostrophe on what's happening here.
It's a great point, and it's also a great point that shows why it's important that we have reserves because...
Yeah, that's where it was going there.
Yes. As you know, there are communities that had to go borrow money out on the market to cover these type expenses, and we don't, we do not have to do that because of the fiscal planning that we have done through the previous councils up to now.
And we were very blessed that we had no hurricane season last year. And one of the things that's gonna be covered, or maybe not covered, I think they've made a statement, is the private road debris pickup. We've got, and we still haven't been reimbursed from that. So the reserves that we have, so this is all coming from reserves.
And remember, they have to be replenished.
So, so we're dwindling down our reserves, so anybody that's thinking... So, so we're dwindling down our reserves, so anybody that's thinking about making a request for funds to the county council, keep this in front of you, because we're, this is, and anybody, thing that you can do to help us finish off those payments from FEMA, from the state and/or the feds, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Motion on the floor to approve the transmittal, to approve the interfund loans. Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Go to Joanne Magley for an update on community events.
Good morning, Joanne Magley, Community Information Director, and we have two events to talk to you about today. On February 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., the Laonia Environmental Center in Deltona will present a wildlife festival with presentations featuring Florida wildlife. The event will also include environmental displays, buggy, eco buggy tours of the Laonia Preserve, guided hikes, and a lot of children's activities. And more details can be found at volusia.org. On February 21st, the county council and the sheriff's office will celebrate the opening of the Volusia Sheriff's Office new evidence facility, and that event will feature a ribbon cutting at 9:00 a.m. And then one more thing, just a reminder that the Volusia County Library System's Big Read program kicked off over the weekend, and it's in full swing, and we encourage our residents and visitors to go to volusia.org and check out the more than 300 programs throughout the library system. That is your events update. Any questions? Thank you.
Hearing none. Thank you, Joanne. This time, we will move to item 13. This is the discussion. I guess I could start. Sometime back, I'd handed around to our interim manager about when are we going to get rid of the interim? And we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the situation going forward. As some of you may recall, I was hesitant to vote for the search, vote for the 27,000 or whatever the number was. I was convinced to go ahead and support that for the fact that we can still use them for, as was mentioned today, we have IT, we have CFOs, we have other needs that we're going to be having within the next year or so for people to help search, to find department directors. And I talked with George, I guess it would have been on the 12th of January, and I asked him had he had any more thoughts. And apparently, you recall, it took some convincing for me to convince him to even be the interim back in June last year. He's agreed to take his name out of a limited amount of time and would like to be considered for the manager. And at this time, I think that we need to discuss going forward what we want to do. And I'm going to hand the gavel over to the vice chair and make a motion that council allow me to work with the currently interim county manager and the county attorney with a contract to come back to the council for approval and discussion, to offer that position to George Rettinwald.
Third.
We have a motion on the floor, a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Denny's, did you want to comment?
Actually, I do. Just a quick sidebar. So in thinking about this, we've actually been, you've been interim since June?
That's correct.
So we have interviewed you for over six months. I mean, this is, right? Technically, you've, at least I have been, I know, and you know. You have been interviewed by this council and members of the public and the leaders for over six months, so I'm very comfortable with that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
I've had the opportunity to watch George work since he came to work for the county, probably longer than anyone else here. And we stop and look at what we have going on in this county right now, and there's so many things that are coming up. One, Amendment 10, we don't know where that's going to go. It'd probably go forward. The half-cent sales tax. And if you brought in a new county manager this time, one of the problems you run into is you hire a man today under one set of circumstances, and in a few months, it changes. The styles may change, and you can end up with an individual who doesn't have a clue about Volusia County. It takes them two years' time just to find out where all the restrooms are in the county buildings. Now, George has worked in almost every area of this county and has done well in every area of this county. He stepped up to the plate with no intentions of staying in here, and I guess it's just kind of habit for him, and he found out it kind of fit. And the real truth is, it has fit. We've had very little turmoil. We've had very little, very few people that have complained about his watch. Now, if we go on a national search and you throw George's name into the mix, a lot of people are going to say, no, it's a setup right now, there's no sense in getting into it. And it's a no-win, because I don't care how you look at it, if we pick George after we do a national search, they're going to say this was just all a sham. This man has worked hard and has proven himself, and somewhere else, he would be a good candidate too. You don't always have to go somewhere else to find an expert when you had an expert here that became the expert because he worked in this county and worked well throughout this county. If he doesn't work out, we'll buy him a suitcase, in a nutshell, like you would any other county manager. But I think that he's earned the right and earned the trust that we should give him the chance to continue on, because we have so much at stake at this time. He knows so much about this county, and he has worked so well with not only the council members, the staff, but with the public in these months he's been here. I think we're doing a disservice not to give him the chance at being our next county manager.
Ms. Wheeler.
I can about ditto everything you've said. Under the circumstances where we are, we've had a lot of controversy that's out there publicly for everyone to see. We've had a lot of changes. We have Amendment 10 coming up. We have a half-cent sales tax. And I can tell you on a personal basis, my conversations with him have been so forthcoming, I can, I can disagree with him and still get a conversation. There is always an open door policy. I cannot describe enough, I'm out there in the community daily, seven days a week, I'm out there, and I'm talking to my constituents, and I meet with my cities every single month. And I have had nothing but good reports of their communication with you, George, and I thank you for that. In departments that are quite complicated, the comments that I'm getting are, he's listening, we're communicating, and that's so important. That's all we're asking. He knows what he's doing. He has the experience. He certainly has the respect out there in the public, and he has my respect. I think we need to move forward with this decision on finding a contract for George Rettinwald to continue.
Thank you. Ms. Post.
So I have to say, and I think this is no surprise to George, because we've had, we've had this and many other conversations, but because of the underlying state of various operations within the county when you came on board, I'll tell you, at the beginning, I was, there's no way in hell I was going to be putting someone in. I thought, you know, national search is an excellent thing. Let's reboot and, you know, move forward in a good direction. But I have to say, George, you know, from day one, the communication was a 180, and you routinely meet with me, which is fabulous, and we do have a lot of hard conversations, and we're able to have those hard conversations and be okay, because that's what I love about you, is that you are very common sense, and I really, really appreciate that in government work. I love that you're, you know, you came up from boots on the ground, so you understand the, each of the departments. You know, we've also had that discussion where you have, you have literally been boots on the ground, standing in septic, you know. So you, you understand the value of the employees, you understand the value of every class of citizen within Volusia County, and you understand the value of ensuring that all of their voices are heard. I know that you have an excellent work ethic. If I'm in here at 7 o'clock at night, you're in here at 7 o'clock at night. So I have to say, very much to my surprise, and I'm very happy to say this, I am absolutely 100% behind, from what I've seen from June till today's date, I am very happy with the work that you've been doing to assess and address a number of different things and really move Volusia County forward. So I'm hopeful that as we do this, as Ben mentioned, you know, from here forward, I'm hoping that that momentum is going to continue, and you know I'm not going anywhere, so I'm going to be having those discussions with you, but I'm absolutely in favor of this.
All right. Now, this is technically not a public hearing. Oh, Ms. Gertman, I didn't see it pop up. My apologies.
I'm sorry.
My apologies, Ms. Gertman.
Well, most know that for me and my election, I feel that I got here through fresh eyes and through the community of District 1. So it's known that I really believe in looking at the county through fresh eyes and new opportunities, because I think maybe people have the best intentions, but when you've been looking at something so long, maybe you lose a little peripheral vision. I am concerned that we do see things through new eyes and greater opportunity. I met with George, and I also found him very trustworthy, very transparent, and very open, and I shared with him my concerns. I am concerned that we haven't had a set standard for our county manager. So I think that contract opportunity, if it's going to specifically define what we're looking for and our expectations, and how we're going to evaluate that going forward, I can be comfortable with moving forward with George. The feedback I've gotten from the community has been very positive and supportive, very little pushback on the negative. So I think my concern with the trust of the community, you seem to have already achieved that at some level, so I'm certainly open to giving that opportunity as well, but I've shared with you my concerns. And what I was most impressed with when we spoke was that you know who you are, right? You know who you are, you also know who you aren't. So, and I was very impressed that I felt your heart and intent is in the right place for the county, and that if you see that we need a different type of leader and that you can't bring that to the table, that you're open to evaluating that and making decisions that are critical to move the county forward. I know we're in a transition, and it really makes a difference who leads us at this critical time, and I do believe you have the best resources at this time to do that. So, thank you.
All right. I was getting ready to say, and I'm sorry I didn't see your name pop up on the screen. This really isn't a public hearing as such, but we do have one person from the public that would like to speak, so I will indulge them if the council so is okay with that. John Nicholson, please.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranberry Avenue. Unfortunately, it's what came out of Mr. Rettinwald's mouth when this popped up in June is, I'll take my name out of the running. I found that for myself to be the worst thing to say, because you don't know what's down the line. I knew him before he put his name into the hopper. That is the only thing that's holding you back, plus the delays. Well, we're going to delay it for this, we're going to delay it for the elections, we're going to delay it for the holidays, we're going to delay it for the halfpenny sales tax. That's poison. You delay, you delay, you delay. He gets in there, anybody running or possibly thinking of running would not put their name in the hat, because if you listen to yourselves, it's almost a done deal. Who would apply for a job knowing that they would not get it? So the well's been poisoned. It's not that it's a bad thing. It's just acknowledge that he misspoke. He is the perfect guy for the job right now. If you went out and said, okay, we'll do a national search, you're not going to get anybody better qualified. It's not that I'm backing him, it's just at this point in time, you cannot go for another person. The well has been poisoned, so I'm asking you to be unified, admit that that one statement is the only thing holding him back. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, and should we restate the motions for clarification for everybody, please?
The motion was made for me to work with the county attorney and George to work up a contract stating everything, which would be brought back to the council for discussion and review, which it could be adjusted at that time. I'm not saying it would be a Bible, but I'm just saying that would be what we would work toward in negotiation and bring back to the council at a meeting at the future date, whether or not that will be the February meeting, first February meeting or the second one, I don't know. It depends on how quickly we can put it together. But it will be brought back to the council for floral vetting and discussion.
Okay, we have that motion on the floor. It's been seconded all in favor by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Motion carries. You can have your hammer back.
Thank you. George, now you can still speak. Now you can speak.
Well, first off, I just want to thank this council for having that kind of faith and confidence in me to give me this opportunity, and I really appreciate that. And I will say that the, over the last six months, the landscape has changed, and thus, in working with all of you and the people in the community, you know, that's what's really made me confident that we can really do great things. You know, I've been here, I chose to move to Volusia County back almost 30 years ago, raised my family here. I worked in private industry here, and then I worked, of course, here through the county. I have worked my way up through. It's kind of funny, Ms. Denny's, you mentioned bridges, and anyone who knows me knows that they kind of have a soft spot in my heart. I started as building and repairing bridges, and then I kind of, it became my style as I go forward, is I like to build bridges amongst the people I work with, the staff, the cities, because we're all in this together. It's a team sport, and that's what we're involved in right now. It's not any one person, and I'm nothing without the team that's here in Volusia County. And that goes from the person who's out there right now on a cold morning with a vac truck blowing out systems and probably freezing while they're doing it, to people that are laying asphalt on a 98-degree day. So, you know, I'm very honored to be able to take them and lead them, and that's really the other part of my decision, is I know we have a great staff here. I did have a great conversation with Ms. Gertman about new eyes, and I want to assure people that my commitment is to look at everything new. My background in industrial technology was all about measuring and taking a look at things, and I can show you some examples if we be in areas of public works that you guys don't even know where we have done those items, but I can just tell you, I will look at the entire organization, because I, we have to evolve. That's what's important. If you don't evolve, you go backwards. And when I took the job, I did, even the interim job, I committed to, you know, running it going forward, because I knew that when you have the organization that we have, and the importance of what we do every day, we needed to go forward, no matter what. And I'm committed to doing that. To the new eyes part of it, I will point out that, you know, we said goodbye to, a little bit to Maryland today, where Maryland represents one of almost 14 directors... they've indicated to me that they will be retiring or would like to be retired. So you're talking, you know, 14 directors, and you also have a handful of new directors that are just starting. So that process is already beginning, and there's going to be a lot of new eyes and a lot of new leadership. And beside those 14 directors, I can say that number multiplies greatly when you get underneath those directors to all the key people that really make things happen, highly experienced people that we're going to have to go and compete and bring in here to up our game, you know? And like I say, I believe we're a great organization, but we need to continue to evolve, and I'm committed to doing that moving forward. And we'll bring in the talent and expertise at any level that we need to do that. And you guys have already made a lot of movements in that direction that set us up perfectly for that, and we'll continue to do that. And I look forward, I need really to, is your point, Ms. Gertman, I need to have those goals, I need to have that direction from all of you, so that I can get the great engine that sits behind me and works here firing on the same cylinders, so that we can make sure we're the best, most efficient and effective machine we can have. And I thank you for your trust.
Just one comment on that. George has done all of this without a, with only one deputy director, deputy manager, and that is Donna, who also will be leaving at some point. So we'll be looking at two deputy county managers in addition to the 12 to 14 or 20, whatever the number winds up being of directors in the next two years. Some challenges, but opportunity. With every challenge, there is an opportunity, and going forward.
Exactly.
I appreciate you. I got the biggest smile on my face when I said, "When are we going to get rid of that interim?" And you said, "I think I'm ready." So that really made me feel good. That was a big smile for all of us, or the three of us that were sitting there. So that was you and Dan and myself. So happy for that. And with that, we'll move to public participation. John Nicholson.
One of the city workers asked me to go out to Tamoka Farms Road, and I should have mentioned this on Six and Seven. That area is booming, okay? And we all know about Mosaic, we all know about Margaritaville. Those people are going to be using that road eventually. You had an article in Today's Agenda that will be considering the southern portion of Tamoka Farms Road. That intersection is a mess. It really is, and it's only going to get worse. So I'm asking you to prioritize that towards the top of your agenda. There's some simple fixes. You've got a lane closed that needs to go, and that people are sitting in this lane, and so they can't go, although they're supposed to go, make it right on red. They can't, because you're using it for something else. You've got like 99% of the traffic on Tamoka Farms Road either go straight or south, or west of the land. They can't do it, because they're both sharing the same lane. And you've got two lanes going right that nobody's using. "Oh, well, yeah, but it will be used when the farmer's market opens up." It's only like this for about eight months out of the year. Well, eight months is a long time for me. So those people sitting in traffic when they don't have to be, there's simple fixes by painting a road, putting a sign, and it doesn't cost you a whole heck of a lot to make lives for a lot of people a lot easier. So I'm asking you to put that forward. Secondly, I've asked you, last year I'll ask you again, to, the properties that you own with regard to landscaping, please set aside some funds for landscaping. I'm really big on that. I'm going to hit the city with it. You've got bathrooms that, so minor, cut down a dead tree, paint a wall. They're relatively minor, but it's great things for us. That area is gaining several, I think it's seven, four-star restaurant, hotels. They need to have your property as nice as their property. And now I'm trying to take a two-by-four to Jim Chisen to get the idea that our property needs to be as nice as your property and the owner's property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. We'll start with closing comments or matters of discussion that's not on the agenda. Mr. Inroom Manager, for the last time, or maybe more than a few times, I'll have to say this.
I'm good for now.
Okay. Ms. Eckert. And I know we had on there nominations and appointments. I don't think we had anyone, any listed to be, okay, just want to make sure to do that. And we'll start with Ms. Gertman.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I think the only thing that I wanted to ask about was, what would be the time to discuss a vision and strategy planning workshop? Is this the time and opportunity to say that that's certainly where we can work to identify those goals and concerns and objectives that we want our county manager and staff to approach and be evaluated on going forward?
Okay, let me try to help. I'm very big on us having more workshops than less. I'm very big on us having a vision. It's going to be up to council to determine a time. You want to do that after a council meeting or on a separate day. Previously, the councils or several people in the council did not want to choose a separate day. I'm open to devoting part of another day. Let me just finish. I'm open to that. I'm also open, and I had mentioned, I wish we could have, at least once a quarter, that we could have a workshop and start the meeting at one o'clock. I have to start a workshop at nine o'clock in the morning. We'd be here, we'd work till nine, we have lunch, and then we start the council meeting at one. I'm also open to having a workshop, as I mentioned, anytime that you want it. It'll be up to the six of you to try to determine a time. I'll be here anytime that y'all want to have it. And I think we need to have that. We need to be able to express visions, goals, what we'd like to see, measurable things that we can lay out and say, "This we want to accomplish." And we can look back in six months, eight months, or a year, a year and a half, and say, "Yes, we've accomplished those." So...
I mean, I think, I think that's reasonable, but for what you were discussing about starting a meeting at one, I think that can also address that other concern we had about addressing or having the public appear at the end of an afternoon meeting instead of the morning. So that might be another way of meeting two birds with...
Well, like I said, I'm open to that. I'm not open to having a meeting start at six o'clock going to one o'clock.
Well, I think you said one o'clock. So, I mean, sometimes your meeting goes to, you know...
Yeah, if we could, if we could have a workshop start at eight, nine o'clock, and it doesn't have to be on a council meeting day, but I think it would be one that would work. We have, the council meeting workshop starts at nine, we break for lunch at noon. And it doesn't mean we just have to have one, we could have more than one.
I think it will take that. I mean, for the level of what we need to prepare for going forward, because we need to evaluate where we are now on so many levels, and then really what is our vision?
Right.
You know, what do we want to get accomplished on the short-term goals and, you know, and the long-term vision? But also, what we want to be able to tell George, we want to see from him.
Okay. Counsel, Ms. Wheeler.
Yeah, I have that on my list also, Barbara, so I was glad that you brought that up. I'm wondering, Ms. Denny's brought up about the department needs, that getting reports, and I kind of think maybe that would be a good thing to have first, so we could take that into the meetings, and then we've got all that information that we can really... But I would like to have a separate day for that.
I think that what she was tying that to was the budget request.
But part of that has to be our vision.
Well, I think that's part of something that is normal course of business. My idea of the workshop would be what we, of course, we envisioned that each department would be staffed to the level that's necessary to provide the services that we expect. And I think that's just, just a given. But let's not wait, let's not wait for that unnecessarily. Let's try to set a time. How about we do this, see, the problem is, we can't talk, and we can't communicate, and we can't suggest. We have to set times in public of when we want to do this. Ms. Post.
So I know we've brought this up many, many, many times over the last two years, and I think it's fantastic that we're talking about it now. The issue has always been us talking about it, and it never coming to actual fruition. So, you know, I would suggest, why don't we all look at our calendars here and figure out two or three dates for upcoming ones, and hash it out now, so that we're actually moving forward with some action on it.
Okay. I think that's the best way. I think another way would be, can we just ask each other, how many of you are against having a separate day set aside for a workshop? Not a full day, but I mean, I'm talking about, instead of a council meeting day...
If we at least keep it on Tuesday, that would help me with my scheduling.
Well, we could do that.
Even if it was the off Tuesdays.
How about if we could do this, if we could set an off Tuesday day, try it on an off council day? That way, we wouldn't be tied to having to be finished and do the workshop on an off council day.
I like that.
How about that?
I like that.
To start. At that meeting, we can then either even look forward to see if we can try it the other way, instead of trying to, I don't really like hammering things out that way, but I'm willing to look at a Tuesday that we don't have a meeting. I'm saying maybe the, except I won't be here. No, I will be. The fourth Tuesday.
How about the sixth Thursday?
The sixth Thursday.
Just adding one here, I'm sorry.
Tuesday the 29th?
I think she said the 26th.
So we're looking at February, or she...
Um...
Tuesday the 29th.
Pardon?
What do we have to get together?
I think that would be, huh?
I mean, what do we have to prepare?
Well, we don't, we don't, the other thing I don't think we need, George, I don't think we need to have 42 department directors there.
Correct. You expressed that last time.
I did. So it'll, it's a council workshop, and...
But I would like to have some key staff available.
Absolutely. But, is that your, your phone? I thought...
Is it something that you'd like to have a facilitator at? Or is it something that you would like to start off?
I've dealt with workshops for 15, 16 years. A facilitator, if we understand the rules of engagement, if you understand, we've had good ones, we've had bad ones, but a facilitator would help us stay on track, so that each of us would get to express what we want to do.
That's what we need, is the balance of discussion, and not, not, yeah, the balance from council.
And so that, once you say something twice, if you have to say it the third time, you've lost. So a facilitator, I think, would be good to let us understand the rules and to move things along. I'd rather have a facilitator than me be the facilitator.
I would as well, and if, I mean, I think we may all know someone, I think there's some good people in our area, and I have two people that I would suggest to George, and maybe others do as well, so maybe they're some of the same people.
George probably has some as well, that he knows of.
Right, and the only part there is, is that of course, if we're going to do that route, I have to make sure of availability of someone on that, on that date.
A certain date.
So it would be helpful, and of course, obviously, when we pick it, we have to have proper advertising and, you know, for that meeting. So it might be best if we could come up with a few possibilities, and then I could match that facility, the facilitator to that date.
How about February 26th?
What date?
February 26th, so Tuesday.
There's no, a February, you said February or January?
February, in addition to the 29th, right?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so not the 26th.
I think we should let our staff take a look at this. We shouldn't do that. Let's come up with a date, let our staffs have access to our calendars.
Well, they don't have access to all of mine. I don't put, I don't put everything in mine.
Yeah, that is a father's doctor's appointment.
So...
Imagine that.
Let me get back to...
I mean, it's still not easy for the staff to kind of help us coordinate it and just reach back to us if we've put a couple of dates out.
Because it, George, do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Something legal. And we do have to advertise it, and... I would like to set a couple of dates as an option.
I think we could, we can work to look at your calendars and come up with some dates, and then essentially the chair would be calling a special meeting at that point, and it would be properly advertised. So I think that's probably the better way.
Okay.
So we can have staff look at your calendars, come up with some possibilities, and then pull that together.
Is that okay with everyone? If you have things that staff doesn't have, if you have things on your calendar that staff doesn't have, just let them know that it's busy that day.
If you look at your calendars and let us know that yourselves, then we'll take that information, and that'll speed up the process.
Okay, we'll move on. Ms. Gertman.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson. Okay. Dr. Lowry. And thank you today for your part of running and part of meeting.
Yeah, I was just, I was going to comment on my first action was involving George, so I was honored to do that. So anyway, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Post.
Great job, Fred. Very official. I wanted to get an update too on Argosy Park, but I don't see Jessica here right now, or Tim, so...
We can have John come up?
Yeah.
Just to get an update, I know we're, we're looking at doing the dedication ceremony in the future, but having the opening soon?
John and Julie, Public Works Director. What I, a little bit I can recall on just this conversation, I think we had some landscaping that still needed to be done, some, just basically, work on the site. The sign has been permitted, and that has to be, yet to be constructed, so that we can officially place it. She says a temporary sign, just to signal that people can get in there and still use the facility, or just some minor things that we have to tweak to make it complete before we actually have a nice formal ribbon cutting.
Okay, but it'll be, it's opening this week, correct?
I believe it...
Soon?
Yeah, I believe it may have already been, yeah, temporarily open with it, just a sign, just so people know.
Wonderful.
It is public parking, and people can use the lot.
Great job, great job. Thank you very much on that, on Argosy Park. The other thing is, I attended the Electrical Line Workers Program graduation the other day, and that is just another example of the vocational programs that we have here in Volusia County that are available to the citizens here. There were people from all over the United States that came to participate in that program, and all the way from Alaska, Washington State, a lot of people from Tennessee. But specifically from Volusia County, there was, I want to say at least five out of the group that I heard. So good to see our local citizens getting involved in that, and would love to maybe work on getting the message out again about our various vocational programs in the county. I had priority workshop on my list as well, I think we all did. So I'm excited to move forward on that and work on setting goals for the year with the council. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wheeler.
Thank you. I participated Saturday in the Big Read opening at the Daytona Library, and what fun. I mean, we had, I don't know, 400 or something like that that ended up coming, and it was amazing. They had a magic show that, I mean, it was just dynamite. I was posting as fast as I could on Facebook, so anybody who wasn't there needed to be there. But I was so proud of what we're doing in Volusia County with the Big Read. That's really amazing. Also, we have received a thing on Daytona Chambers 99th Annual Dinner sponsorship, and I was liking council's permission to have some kind of a sponsorship. I don't think we, I was asked again by staff, I was asked again by staff to...
Annual meeting.
Uh-huh, they're right. It's their annual dinner, 99th Annual Dinner.
Who's that?
The Daytona Chamber.
Okay, I've already paid for mine, but...
That's what I was, that's what I was talking to George about, too.
Yeah, we should sponsor a table, so if that's okay with council. Yep, okay.
I do...
Thank you. We've done it in the past.
We have, we have.
Yes.
It's something I think down the road, when we're talking further, we need to get some more clarity on the various groups and make sure that there's a public purpose involved.
Exactly.
involved so that we're clear on sponsorships. So we'll, we'll tackle that going forward.
Thank you.
But I got your agreement now.
Okay. Thank you. And I just have to make a little plug. I don't know if anybody read the news, but it looks like Daytona Beach Shores is moving forward to get an urgent care in Halifax, with Halifax. And I'm really excited about that. The shores needed something and I'm hoping it's going to go through, but it was out there in the public, so I'm, I'm giving my two cents worth and that's pretty exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dinnies.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff. First of all, I want to thank staff. We had a huge crowd, believe it or not, for our Coyote Workshop at the Ranin Center last week. They added more chairs.
Heard over a hundred, a hundred people.
Over a hundred people. We were about a hundred and twenty-five. We had Fish and Wildlife Commission came from Tallahassee, Gainesville, Jacksonville, Ocala. We had Animal Control from New Smyrna Beach and the county that were there. It was, it was bigger than we all anticipated, so thank you for that. It was a great, great community workshop for all that can help make that happen. I want to talk, now I have to touch something that's been on my radar. I've been watching from afar and really don't even want to have this conversation. But we have a new council and even some of the council from previously, I'm not sure how, how much historical knowledge of our ad authorities, but I need to talk about ad authorities and I'm specifically Southeast Volusia Ad Authority. And I'm going to address Southeast Volusia in terms of collaboration. Several years ago, council actually, come budget time, turned down all ad authorities. You remember that, George? You remember that, staff?
Yes.
We sent them back because it said we're supposed to, they're supposed to collaborate, the three ad authorities. And it wasn't done and there were budget protocols that were not followed. So council, I believe at that time, we gave them thirty days operating dollars, if that's right, Donna, to, and then they had to, we forced them literally to collaborate and come back to council and explain how they were going to collaborate as required by policy, by this, by this current, current policy that has not changed. So this isn't news to any, to anybody. So there have been some events that have occurred and Southeast Volusia has not been included countywide. Now, some, most of it I've let slip, but I'm watching. So what I do at the first of every year, I ask my assistant to put the city's meetings on my calendar. So if I have time, I can stop in New Smyrna, Edgewater, Port Orange. It's all my calendar. So do the same with the ad authorities. I need to, you know, I just stop in, just attend a meeting and go on. Well, what, the first thing that struck me was the HA boards' meetings occur exact same days we have county council meetings. Mr. Reckon, well, Mr. Hargrove took his seat. Thank you. Because, because, so, so that means Mr. Hargrove, who's normally our legal representation at the HA board, can't attend HA board meetings because he's here. And most boards and authorities have changed their calendar when council changed hours. So my first request is going to be to ask the HA board to adjust their meeting schedule so that Mr. Hargrove and should a county council member choose to attend, they can do that. That's minor. So we just had an event here, two events, and these are the big ones. This is why I've had some conversations. We've had two, you've heard of Visit Florida. Visit Florida is our statewide ad tourism authority for the state. Well, Daytona Beach was very fortunate to have been chosen in January to host the Florida Huddle. Visit Florida statewide and outside of state, here in Florida, at our Ocean Center, County Wide Ocean Center. So our executive director of SEVA, Southeast Volusia Ad Authority, had heard about this in a newsletter in April of 2018 that Daytona would host it through the Visit Florida newsletter. So she inquired to staff at the HA board and said, well, this is great. We can showcase Volusia County. This is great. And was told at that time, well, yes, it's kind of like, you know, when you go to a home show, I guess I've never been to any of these, but, but the home show where they set up aisles and everybody displays their wares. So great. Volusia County gets to be highlighted at the County Wide Ocean Center for the HA board, Southwest Volusia, Southeast Volusia. And, and she was assured that they would have one whole row to highlight Volusia County. We're hosting it. And that didn't happen. Not only did that not happen, she was given one free pass to the event. So the day before the opening, they call it a huddle, everybody has their own language. The day before the huddle, Southeast Volusia was asked if they wanted to put a pull-up banner in the Daytona booth. They didn't have time to get there and set short notice. Southeast Volusia should have been showcased. West Volusia should have been showcased. This is not collaboration. This is not. There's one thing to talk about collaboration, when you stand before us and present a budget, there's another thing in the day-to-day operations and implementation, and this one has fallen short big time. That's just, that's just one, that's just one. The Sunwing Media Mission, Southeast Volusia was not included on that. Let's go to Silver Airways. I'm not going to get in all the details that I have here in this file, but we just had a Silver Airways flight last week. Flew down to Fort Lauderdale, came back. And I noticed when I started looking at it on social media and I'm thinking, okay, well, this is really, and it was a great event. It was a great event. But yet again, nobody from Southeast Volusia was included. Not even the Chamber of Commerce. And I have to tell you, I've now received an official letter from the executive director of the Southeast Volusia Chamber of Commerce, asking why Southeast Volusia is not being included in these events. Sue, can you put this up? So I did a public records request and asked for the manifest of who was on Silver Airways' flight. Now, I have nothing against anybody that was there, that, please don't misunderstand me. That's not what I'm saying. Twenty-four seats on that plane, as I understand it. So I looked at the list, there's no names up here because that's not the issue. But I, what is the issue is the geographic locations that were represented. There's a map of Volusia County. Sue, can you put it up just a little, okay. So from the Daytona area, we have eleven. The Land, three. Ormond Beach, three. St. Augustine, Flagler County, two. So from the HA board represented, you've got eleven, including the Daytona Chamber, as they should, as they absolutely should. West Volusia, two, including the Chamber. Southeast Volusia Ad Authority, zero. Southeast Volusia Chamber of Commerce, zero. Ormond Beach, three. St. Augustine, two. This makes my point as to what has been going on and occurring. And Mr. Hargrove, we've, we've talked about this, Mr. Reckonwald, we've, we've talked about this. This is going to change. There's, how you can include St. Augustine and why Southeast Volusia is not even included and there's, there's more events. This isn't, this isn't an isolated incident. This just happens to be the last two and they were both major. And from the ad authorities, and there's been some discussion, um... Back in, was it 2013, Mr. Hargrove? Maybe 2014, that the council at the time did away with the CVB board at the HA board for reasons, and it was a unanimous vote, without getting in all that historical perspective. But here's the thing, our ad authorities, they have their money, but we're oversight, we're responsible, this council's responsible. So when I have a part of the county, especially my part of the county, that's not being represented, we have, we have to do, we have to do something about this. So, Mr. Hargrove, I need you to, I need you to talk to me because there's an undercurrent here that, that has to be, that has to be adjusted. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, Charles Hargrove, Deputy County Attorney. In 2013, the county council at that time defunded the CVB and the result of, of issues they had prior to that with the board, not necessarily the board, but the executive director and some issues. And the idea was to get better oversight and control. So they went from a new model. The old model basically had the CVB having its own independent organization. I think it was a nonprofit or a 501(c)(3). Yeah. And they had the HA employees as the employees of that organization. And we went to a different model, one because of liability issues. There are several legal reasons why, that every time there was an issue, the county had, had serious exposure. So what we did is we investigated a way to minimize that liability. And the one way to do it was to have those employees with HA while protecting their, their benefits, like health benefits, to make sure that there was no change or drop and they're, and they received these benefits. We went to a leased employee company. And by having a leased employee company take on these employees, if there were issues that involved either civil rights claims or lawsuits, there'd be no exposure and it'd be handled by their employer. And to a great deal, that would deflect a lot of negative commentary that the council might receive from, from an oversight perspective. More importantly, it would also help the board. The boards are composed of very capable members of the community who operate hotels and, and also are involved in tourism, but they only meet like maybe, you know, six times out of the year and they have to rely upon the information being provided them by their executive directors. And so they're not necessarily clued into the day-to-day operational issues that pop up that are handled by the leased employee company that actually insulate this council as well as their, their respective boards. There was a point, several occasions where they had a payroll company, at least two of the, two of the ad authorities. And I'm talking about over the last, I guess, eight years or ten years. And the payroll company would provide the services and we had some, as with some of the agencies about the cash management and managing payroll, which we resolved mainly in a reactive role, once we, once we learned about, about the issues. But we discovered then that the payroll companies would not assume any kind of liability or responsibility for the acts of the, of the HA, acts of the, the ad authority employees. So that's another reason why we changed the model. But more importantly, in 2015, this council, by unanimous motion, decided that the ad authorities should work together and not against each other and therefore had a mandate that they all collaborate together on all matters that were, were common to them or that was of interest. For example, if there was a, an IT issue or they're coming up with a program, they would work together on that so we could actually get economies of scale and efficiency by having the one software developer develop something that would work for both the ad authorities. To the extent that there are any differences, that would be recognized either in the, in the cost of the contract among the ad agencies, but they would still have the same contractor. And the council was concerned about that because there was a time when they were operating independently and not really looking at, at ways to save money or be cost-effective. So at this point, you already have in place the requirement of collaboration and the expectation that they work together and to be inclusive and not exclusive.
So, so I'm, I guess I'm, I'm just alerting council to this because of the Florida Sunshine Law, can't talk about it any other, any other place. But there's going to be more discussions in the background with, with me, with, with the Southeast Volusia Ad Authority and staff on how we go forward and this doesn't happen again. And what's really striking about this, south of I-4, there's no representation there at all. And I'm not putting this on the airport because I know who put the manifest together, just for the record. I've got the emails. I, I know how it happened. So my request is, Mr. Hargrove, and, and what I'm going to do is contact my representative who I appointed on the HA board. I need to have a conversation with my appointee. It might be good for all of us to do that because there's some things, my concern is, there's indicators they want to go back to the future. And I know that there's been a discussion in, in the last board meeting that possibly staff was in agreement with that and that was told to the HA board at the last meeting. Mr. Hargrove shaking his head, you know what I'm discuss, what I'm referring to here? And that's not true. Let's say it's not accurate. Mr. Reckonwald, anything you want to add to this?
Sure.
You've got to help me out.
I would love to jump in on this.
We're going in the weeds here big time.
Right. Let's, yeah, as far as the, you got a couple of issues. You're talking about collaboration. And I think that one, what I might suggest is that I could meet with the three executive directors that are involved and go, because I have history here as well, having been in the, in the Ocean Center area. So I think I can go ahead and have a meeting and talk about collaboration and where we're at and how we should be having these type of examples and then bring back the results of that to you guys. The second part you're talking about is the actual structure of the HA. And they, there has been some requests. As you know, there's money that we use for promotional fund that was part of that restructuring. We are taking, we, only we've agreed to do is take a look at the amount of that and that, to see if it fits with the history of what we're putting out there for activities. So if we're budgeting too much, for instance, you know, then that might be something to look at. Just a preliminary look and then talking to our folks, you know, and one of the tricks, again, having some familiarity with this, people don't book big sizable events here in a year. Typically, it's two, three years out because they're on a cycle. So we have to remember that. So you're committing money and you have to make sure that money's available two, three years from now. And I think that was the reason for the structure as it is today. There's also some people that's attached to that money as well. So, you know, all we agreed to do is to have, you know, to take a look at those numbers and take a look. But as far as changing the structure, there has been some issues with a vendor over there that they're using. And what we've, you know, the first step I felt before you even consider a structural change of any kind would be, let's take a look at that vendor. And that's what we're doing and where our staff is working. And I asked for some backup data that they would provide so that we could take that look. And that's where we're at. So the, you know, and again, I think that is our duty to be cooperative and work with them, but no one has suggested necessarily that we're going to make any changes or anything at that point. So I'm sorry if that was misrepresented, but, you know, there were other county people there as well. And, and like I say, I think the best, let me talk to the three of them together. I have, I know them and I think that, again, sometimes it's just like in goals and things, there's been several years. And so let's go ahead and sit down and, hey, where are we now and how's that going and how can we make it better? And I, I think it'd be a very fruitful conversation.
And I, I think it needs to come back is that the councils are responsible. Should any ad authority do any kind of reorg, that comes through council. Should any ad authority do any kind of reorg, that comes to council. That, it comes...
Well, especially, yes. I mean...
It comes through here for all three of them.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. Exactly. And in fact, right, they, I made that clear that, you know, while I'm the person to first come to and talk to about it, that it comes back to this body and, and that's important. And I think they understand that. And like I say, I, I will definitely get out there and get on the collaboration part because I think that's something that, that just requires rolling up our sleeves and, and getting it down on what we're going to be doing from here on out to make sure that these type of things don't happen. And, and I do know enough to say too, is that, keep in mind too, that just like us, sometimes it's hard to match schedules and all that. So, I do think that the idea, you know, what we have to make sure is that there's plenty of notice. Because I think what we're finding out is, is well, people have been asked, but like you say, if they've been asked with no time to prepare for it, that's not fair either. You know, that's checking the box. Well, I asked, but you know...
They're, they're skating through on a technical...
Right. And I just want to make sure again that everyone's talking and it gets back, we've had talk, you know, back, you know, countywide marketing plans and stuff that we have all worked on in the past. So, I, I can bring all that back and we can, and get back kind of to where we need to be. So...
And, and with Silver Airways, I mean, this is actually coming from a very positive position from Southeast Volusia because with JetBlue, Southeast Volusia, we showed up with banners. They brought out the Chamber of Commerce. They brought out business leaders. They were probably one of the largest blocks out there supporting that JetBlue when we did that. And they said, "Hey, we want to be there. We want to support it, but we're, we weren't even included." So, it, it was going forward, going forward. We, we need to, Mr. Reckonwald, I'll let you handle that, but the rest of it, well, I know that I have upset a few people. The texts are coming in as, as we speak, but that's what happens. I have to talk about this publicly to the council. I can't do this behind the scenes and we'll get to the bottom of it. And I look forward to collabora, collaboration going forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. That was a lengthy discussion about, anyway, we'll move on from, did you, Ms. Gertman?
I did forget to mention one thing very quickly and that was a thank you for the weekend for MLK. There was participation by thousands Volusia-wide and here locally, we had Congressman Michael Walz march with us. So, and they shared about their offices being staffed at City Hall. So, it was, it was just a great unity in the community and I think for the, for the council, thank you for that support and thanks for those that attended and participated over the weekend.
Okay. Just one quick comment and I don't want to go any further on this, on the HABs and the, and the east, east-west and north-south. I cannot imagine that anyone would be intentionally excluded from participating in an event like the launch of an Airways. But to me, that's the most telling thing, that, that if no one was contacted to be a part of it, that would be the collaboration part, from what I recall when all of that was going on as a bystander in the community, was exactly what you pointed out. It was to collaborate in the, maintaining the expenses to be low, where you could collaborate in that. I think the marketing efforts by the three are different in, in effect. So, to collaborate and say you've got, each one has to, but if they intensely excluded them and didn't notify them that there was going to be a Silver Airways flight that day, I think that, that's pretty bad. But, Ms. Post.
I just wanted to say very quickly, and the two heads of Silver Airways actually live in Southeast Volusia as well, so, you know, they're New Smyrna and Port Orange. So, certainly we should be involved from that level.
That doesn't mean though the ad authority and the Chamber was...
I understand, but I'm just...
Okay. Let's, let's move on from this. That's a, that's an internal matter that George is going to straighten out. It's going to be one of his, one of his last assignments as an interim. But I will be attending on the 31st, my first meeting with, as a representative on the Sun Rail. I think they're going to hear some things and see some things. I think there are alternatives to a discussion going forward that are going to be brought up. I met with John Booker on this. He's given me some good insight on some discussion items. My main, my main focus on that is going to be, while I opposed it, we have it. And so, we have to plan going forward. I do not want Volusia County residents to be paying for something that we're not getting. I'm going to make that very, very emphatic, that we're not going to pay for that 11 miles or 12 miles to the land if we don't have it. And I think that's really important. Dan?
Mr. Chair, I feel odd asking the council this, but as you know, the charter says that you're the representative of the council for the, these boards. The interlocal agreement unfortunately says that the representative of the Sun Rail Commission is to be elected by the council or appointed by the council. I forget the exact word.
Appointed was the word.
Appointed. And FDOT last year requested evidence of that for Mr. Patterson.
I sent it.
And so, it might be well just to, so in case that, there's a vote which might be of some concern that if the council go ahead and take action to designate you as the representative, it's belt and suspenders. The charter requires it. I don't like to ask you to do unnecessary things, but in this instance...
I thought that was covered on the 10th when I made the...
Let's make it simple. I'm making a motion to sentence you, I mean, appoint you.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to appoint me as the representative of Volusia County to the Sun Rail Commission. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. It's done. So, you'll send him a letter, Mr. Ecker, right?
Sure. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Otherwise, I'll show up and they, I think they were just trying to have, they don't want to see me there. I think that's probably it. They don't, they know what I'm going to say.
I will let...
No, they don't. Anyway, with that, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned at 12:25.